Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Bond?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
Here.
Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three eight minutes of the Scranton-Lacawanna Health and Welfare Authority meeting held October 18, 2018.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time? I have just one. An executive session was held this evening regarding a matter of litigation.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Joan Hodawan.
Joan Hodawan, city resident and taxpayer. Your Acadus study, is it soup yet?
No, it's not soup yet, but it's getting warm. We expect to have, we talked about this at a meeting with V. A. Bozoni today, in the panel meeting. We're looking at having a session with them between administration and some members of council, probably this month, and then have a full work session with city council shortly thereafter. So, we think within the next thirty days you'll have two meetings and a full report.
Okay, and there will be a public hearing, public caucus?
Absolutely. Well, we plan to have a work session, so we'll have the public here, absolutely.
Okay, well, it's better than nothing. Thank you very much. The operations budget for 2019 finally hit the website. Took two months, but better late than never. Do we have a status on efforts to obtain ownership of the Serenity Building?
I have an update that I'll give in fifth order. I don't know if it'll answer that specific question, but...
Okay. I was pleased to see in the Times-Tribune that P E L does not expect the recent FBI raids to have a negative impact on the city exiting Act 47 distress status. Of course, I am a little concerned about what it will do to our credit rating, the possibility there could be an issue there, but hopefully that will not happen. I was also very pleased to see the article that Jim did on Linda Abely's upcoming retirement after twenty-nine years of service. Lot of times, we focus on all the problem children in the area that are under investigation or have been charged or indicted or convicted, and we tend to neglect stories about the public servants who have served long and faithfully, but in credit to our community, and Linda Abely is one of them. So, I'm also happy to see that she's being replaced by Mary Pat. I don't know how Mary Pat pronounces her last name. Is it DeFleche?
I think it's DeFleece.
DeFleece?
DeFleece.
Anyway, she's more than qualified, and that's good news for the city. Another thing is Wayne was at the Black History Black Scranton Project last Friday night that Glennis Johns set up, and it was quite informative and very, very emotional impact. Would you agree, Wayne?
Yeah, myself and Councilman Donahue were there as well.
And Kyle was there, too.
It was very, very well done.
It was well worth the visit. If you want to see what Glennis is doing for the rest of the month for Black History, she has a website, blackscranton.com/events. You can find out when you can see some of her work. What was amazing is usually during Black History Month, we hear a lot about Martin Luther King Jr. and Rosa Parks and all the national figures, but we never or rarely hear anything about local Black history, and that's what she researched and that's what she presented. And some of the stories were just amazing. There was George Brown, who in 1882 started up the largest trucking company in eastern Pennsylvania. There was Lincoln Tillman, the first Black firefighter in Scranton who served for fifty-two years. You know, there was George Jones. He was the first mail carrier hired in 1894 when the vast majority of African-Americans still couldn't read or write. There was the stories of the downtown slums in which Blacks were forced to live and how hard it was for an African-American to try to buy a home on Prescott Avenue in 1911, that the residents of his street tried to buy him out. Just fascinating history. And I went from that project to the Library Express where Sandra Burgett Miller was doing a book signing on her book, Tell 'Em. And she told the story of her great-great-grandfather, Thomas Burgett, who was a slave, who ran away, leaving his family behind, got on the Underground Railroad and got off in Waverly, Pennsylvania, where the residents were protecting and welcoming fugitive slaves, 1848. Who would've thunk that Waverly, Pennsylvania would be a haven for fugitive slaves? I wouldn't. So, just to continue, if you would let me. This book is made into a play. The play will be performed Friday and Saturday night at Scranton Cultural Center at 7:30 p.m. Mission is fifteen dollars. I strongly recommend it for everyone to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here tonight is that I think it's important for the residents to consider that when this rainwater, stormwater study is done and it's presented to the public, I'm hoping that there are some people that are willing to litigate that issue when the city tries to implement it, because even though I haven't read the report yet, the city gave away the money for the stormwater collection system with its agreement of sale with Pennsylvania American Water. So, there's just a host of issues that can be litigated, in my opinion, on that issue. And I think it's time for the residents of the city to stop sitting around and expecting this council, or this administration, or any administration, or any council, to do anything of any value for the residents of this city. And I really think it's time for the residents to realize that it's time for them to empower themselves, and a judicial review of this whole issue would just be a wonderful thing. And maybe the Scranton Times would report on it as it flowed through the court. I think a lot of issues would be highlighted, and we'd learn a lot more about how our city government functioned. And you know, it's also my hope that as these investigations begin to expand, hopefully, that we'll get a much better view of what's been taking place in our city over an extended period of time. I find it very troubling where we are now, especially in regards to public education in Scranton, Pennsylvania, and the talk of, you know, I'd assume trying to contain costs, but we've reached a point now in Scranton where children aren't even receiving a, I won't even use the word quality, because that went away a long time ago. And I think it's time for the residents of this city to show an ability to lead by going into the polls and just cleaning the slate. The other thing I have is, you know, I'm just amazed, I had an opportunity to walk through the new county building that they're opening, and I'm just amazed that the Women's Resource Center has an office there. I didn't know they were part of county government. And you know, I'm just amazed that there isn't a, if we're going to play the gender role, why there's not a Men's Resource Center? Because, you know, so many people talk to me about it, the inequities in law, in custody and support issues, and divorce issues. And when you watch the court function, especially in support or custody issues, men are very seriously short-changed. And not only are they short-changed, but the court has lost its ability to make sure that the support paid to the minor child actually reaches them. And I just find it amazing that we elect state senators and state representatives who don't make sure that children receive their support. Not that it isn't paid, because men are held hostage to child support over an extended period of time, but when the money changes hands sometimes, it very rarely makes it to the child. And there's an awful lot of children that are receiving much more than minimal orders of support, but they aren't living the life of somebody who has more than a basic order, which calls into question how the court itself functions and how the legislature can create laws and how judges can interpret those laws and not protect the children in the community. And it's a very troubling thing that these things take place. So, you know, there's just so many issues that the residents of this city could find themselves involved in, and maybe it's time to get moving. I know that I sent a letter to the Scranton Times this week because I'm going to petition the Scranton School District to possibly consider me for the vacant school director's seat, only because I think that the city school district has just continued to tax and tax the residents, and I think it's time to elect somebody who can take himself into a courtroom without the solicitor and begin to try to do something for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident. Once again, I'd like to call on, if people want to sue somebody and they're just stitching to do it, sue the state of Pennsylvania and the county for nearly forty percent tax-exempt properties in this city, tax-exempt entities. And it's really about time that, the other day in the paper, I read an article written by a math teacher from Scranton, and there's twenty million dollars less are received for students in the same category as other cities. So, I think that would go a long way to paying off their deficit. And they'd have to behave themselves after that. There's been some objectionable behavior, as we've seen in Friday's paper, it was, or Saturday. I can't quite pinpoint the date. And yeah, it is time for the Acadia Study to come in. And I'll once again give you a good grade for trying to introduce some ethics into the system. It's not like we couldn't use it. Now, I left on your desk there Health and Science article from the Scranton Times and study, "E Cigarettes Outperform Patches and Gums." So, in the interests of getting people off of cigarettes, if you're really interested, I would say this was a much better ticket by personal experience. I haven't had a cigarette in two years, almost. So, and that was quite a while before that, when I broke apart on my car that was nearly impossible to get, sent me scurrying to a scrapyard, and I was disgusted. It's something I shouldn't have done, but I did. And I got it fixed just grand, but you know, it was a pain in the neck nonetheless. But according to this, possibly it's two and a half times more people quit smoking, and I see a lot of attack ads from the other side about flavored juices and stuff like that. And I mean, whatever would get them off of cigarettes, I would say it's about seventy percent better than smoking a cigarette. So, it's really important that we take a more or less a comprehensive look at things and see what works and what doesn't, and hopefully someday we'll have a smoke-free society. But I think there'll always be somebody wants to puff on a cigarette, and that's all there is to it. It causes a lot of health problems and such, but you can't always chase people around every hour of the day. We can't keep opioids out of our town, illegal opioids, let alone stop people from smoking a cigarette somewhere. And so, enough on that, and I'll give you a break and maybe, oh, meetings. Maybe we could trade a few days off for the Monday holidays as a little spice-it-up-for-us gift, because the one thing that it does do, you get your work done, but we are seriously compromised if there's a lot of days off on being able to comment on anything. We got five minutes up here, and that's it. So, if we're off a considerable amount more days in a year, then that means that it might add up to forty minutes or an hour less of comments from us. And sometimes we have something to say, and sometimes we're just being dizzy, but thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jay Walsh, Scranton resident, taxpayer. We're going to have a St. Valentine's Day rally down in Harrisburg, and I think you guys all got a copy of my thing that I'm reading off of on the fourteenth, and then we're going to go to Washington on the fifteenth. My first notion is, this is heaven. It's the gift of life, okay? It's not someplace else. We the people demand our American birthright of eight-hundred-and-forty trillion dollars and the return of our government to we the people. We have eight-hundred-and-forty trillion dollars. Politicians in Washington won't tell you that. My first effort's going to be to get teachers a hundred-thousand-dollar salary and all the support they need in their teaching endeavors. Our children are the cornerstone of the future. They're the foundation. If there's anything more important in this life than our children, you guys give me an idea. We should have parent-teachers and student boards for self-determination. Kids today are smart. I think a couple of you guys have kids. They come out with the darndest things, and they're usually spot-on. Free Medicare for all. With the eight-hundred-and-forty trillion dollars, why should we pay for medicine? Okay? There's already been a competitive level out there in the insurance industry to get prices in line right across the board, from free gym to free prescriptions or small fee. The other thing is referendum voting. I think you people put yourselves in a hot seat. I think that we the people can determine what we need, and with eight-hundred-and-forty trillion dollars, we can get it done. Now, I've been in over two-hundred proceedings in the Commonwealth Court, and I have thirty-eight lawsuits in federal court, okay? I was going to be a lawyer until I realized that BAR stands for the British Accredited Registry. Attorneys work for the British monarchy. They backdoored us in the eighteen hundreds. They couldn't beat us on the Independence War, and they couldn't beat us at the 1812 War. So, they didn't give up, they just found a different way to go about it. We don't need lawyers. I've asked many a lawyer, why do we need lawyers? And most of the responses are, we don't. Matter of fact, your attorney let you pass a budget that included the Municipality Act violating it. Did he do his job? You guys pay him a lot of money, don't you? You guys don't make as much money as he does, does it, do you, doing your council work? Our government bottom line has been hijacked at every level, okay? And it's just the way the system melted down, okay? It's been incremental encroachment since the eighteen fifties and even before then, the founding fathers. George Washington didn't want to do any more terms when he was elected because he had such a cash business in his making Scotch. Still today, they sell twenty-two-hundred bottles a quarter. He even writes that, "I can't believe how much money I'm making." And he paid tax on it, and then he put down the Whiskey Rebellion, because everybody had respect for George Washington. Thirteen founding fathers found themselves hung or at a firing squad of King George for what they did. It was treasonous to the British monarchy. So, when they found them, they were mostly southern, if not all were southern signers. Hey, they found you. They put you up against the wall, they shot you, or they hung you from a tree, whatever their disposition was. So, I'm asking you guys, in the sense of your grandchildren, your children, your grandchildren, and future generations, that you join us in Harrisburg, that we take back our government. We're not asking you to do dances, we're just asking you for your presence.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Is there anyone else who would like to address council?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
Yes. As Joan mentioned before, on Friday night, I had the opportunity of stopping at the opening of the Black Scranton Projects, remembering and understanding the heritage of Black Scrantonians exhibit at the Marketplace at Steamtown. And I must say that Glennis Johns did an absolutely tremendous job putting it all together, and I encourage everyone to check it out if you get a chance. The exhibit's on the second floor of the Marketplace until Thursday, February 28th. Moving on, over two months ago, council approved a ten-year tax abatement on all new construction in order to incentivize economic development in the city. The school district approved that same legislation about two weeks after we did. So, the last piece of the puzzle is for the county to pass the legislation, but it has not yet been placed on their agenda, and I can't think of any logical reason yet why they haven't put it on there, especially since they've approved similar legislation throughout the county. So, Ms. Reed, would you be able to send a letter to the commissioners asking when and/or if they plan on putting a legislative for the city of Scranton on their agenda?
Thank you. And also, last week, Governor Wolf announced a major new infrastructure initiative called Restore Pennsylvania, which will invest four-point-five billion dollars to be funded by a common sense severance tax on natural gas production. Pennsylvania is the only major natural gas-producing state who does not levy a severance tax. This plan would not only reinvest severance tax proceeds into infrastructure for the betterment of all Pennsylvanians, but certain aspects of this plan could certainly benefit the residents of Scranton. There were a total of five priority infrastructure areas that were outlined in the governor's proposal, but I'm just going to highlight the four of them that could have the biggest impact on the city of Scranton. The first one's storm preparedness and disaster recovery. That includes critical flood control infrastructure, such as stream bank restoration, which is the responsibility of the city, as well as dams, levees, and flood walls, helping families rebuild by creating a disaster relief trust fund to assist individuals that don't qualify for compensation by FEMA or other programs, and it also helps with stormwater infrastructure. The stormwater plan's going to be mandated, so it's coming whether we like it or not, and quite frankly, we're going to need all the help we're going to get. Another part of it is demolition, revitalization, and renewal, which includes funding for light demolition and redevelopment, brownfield cleanup, containment remediation, and green infrastructure. And then the other two that I think could be beneficial to the city is transportation capital projects and also high-speed internet access. These are areas that municipalities all across the state are struggling to find realistic ways to finance these projects that must be done or mandated to be done, and it's encouraging that we have a governor who recognizes these challenges and is willing to take the lead to address them. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, any motions or comments?
Yes, briefly. I also attended, as we all talked about before, the Black Scranton Project on First Friday at Steamtown Marketplace. I have to tell you, it was very informative and a well-done display of Black History in Scranton, and I would like to recognize and thank Glennis Johns for all the hard work, dedication, and vision she has put into this effort. For her, it really is a true labor of love, and so Glennis, we're all very proud of you for all the hard work you did, not only for your community, but for all of Scranton. I'd like to comment briefly as well on some comments made last week from a speaker about our change to Monday meetings. They may need a little further clarification. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Perry for his comments relative to Monday meetings and his work schedule. Historically, city council meetings have been changed to differing dates because of city council member's schedules, so this is nothing new. However, the latest conspiracy theory that it was done just to have less meetings is absurd. So, for the record, in 2017, when city council met on Thursday, we had forty-two regular council meetings. 2018, when we changed the Mondays, there were thirty-eight regular council meetings, plus a scheduled work session and two scheduled idea sessions, all while entertaining one-hundred-and-forty different pieces of legislation. So, it would appear that we had one less public meeting last year than the year before. So, but I've stated in the past, and I will repeat it again tonight, I think we may have too many regular city council meetings. And clearly, we are, this city, the outlier as compared to other cities throughout Pennsylvania that are our size. And I'm not saying that we have too many meetings, I'm saying we may have too many regular city council meetings. I'll fully explain that in my comments. But first, I'd like to repeat the results of a study that I did earlier this year on city council meetings. For those that did not hear those comments, or simply weren't listening. Allentown City Council meets twice a month on the first and third Wednesdays. Altoona City Council meets once a month on the second Wednesday. Bethlehem City Council meets twice a month on the first and third Tuesdays. Easton City Council meets twice a month on the second and fourth Wednesdays. Erie City Council meets twice a month on the first Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. and the third Wednesday at 7:30 p.m. Harrisburg City Council meets twice a month for a regular city council meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays, but they also meet on the first and third Tuesdays for a work session. Hazelton City Council meets twice a month for nine months and once a month for three months. Lancaster City Council meets twice a month on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Redding City Council meets twice a month on the second and fourth Mondays. Wilkes-Barre City Council meets twice a month for a regular city council meeting on the second and fourth Tuesday, or Thursday, I'm sorry, and they meet on the second and fourth Tuesday for a work session. And finally, York City Council meets twice a month on the first and third Tuesday. So, clearly, we are the exception as far as our meeting schedule is concerned. Regular city council meetings are twice a month or less in every city reviewed, and only two city councils meet beyond that. Harrisburg and Wilkes-Barre, that add two monthly work sessions to their schedule of two meetings per month. And as I've said repeatedly, I personally feel that two regular city council meetings along with two work sessions, monthly, as Wilkes-Barre and Harrisburg currently do, is the most efficient meeting schedule. It allows for work sessions to be scheduled days or even a week before a regular city council meeting, allowing for the council to more fully discuss agenda items prior to introduction, as well to have a more in-depth discussion on pressing city business. It also allows city council to bring in special guests for conversations and valuable debate on a more regular basis. So, to me, this is a meeting model that promotes more efficient and effective So, to me, this is a meeting model that promotes more efficient and effective city government. Now, I'm not proposing that right now because it may take a whole charter revision to even do that, but I think it's something people need to know how I feel about this because I think these meetings are valuable. They're absolutely valuable for a lot of different reasons, but, you know, we've taken a little too far. And all of our work sessions, by the way, if we went that route, would be on city council or be on public view. Depress would be here, ECTV would be here, we'd be sitting right at that table. But the fallacy that our weekly meetings are all that city council members do is another thing that irks me week in and week out. I can tell you over the last four-plus years that I've been on city council, that this meeting probably accounts for 5% to 15% of, of an average a week with the time spent on city business. And I'm sure my colleagues could agree with that as far as their schedules are concerned as well. So, yes, I will repeat, these meetings are absolutely important. They are the mechanism that we use to get the city's business through passing and rejecting legislation, as well as providing input and information to citizens and taxpayers. I get it. The question is, can we do better? And that's all, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank Leslie Collins from Scranton Tomorrow, Tim Maloney from Scranton Tomorrow for coming in and giving us a presentation and an update on all of the different things that is currently going on with that organization. I was really impressed with the presentation. I do think that that organization is trying to improve the city, and I think the city's going to be better off for all of the commitments that they have made and all the work that they have done and that they will continue to do. So, I want to thank them for that. The Sorenti Center has come up multiple times, and we did receive a response from Mr. Bozoni. I know Ms. Horwannis was curious about it, so I'll read a portion of it. I didn't get a chance to go through all of the numbers, but I will do that next week. The technology component of the overhaul of the building was completed by city personnel. Mr. Bozoni said that the delineation of costs remains since the principal project components have yet to be undertaken. Relative to the pole barn, which I asked about last week, the estimated cost is $18,000. The intent of the pole barn is generally to clean up and store items which are either needed on-site or are transient. The cost is included in the police capital budget. Other components of improvements to the police headquarters site are sidewalk improvements, resurfacing of the parking lot, and the ESCO component are energy upgrades. The ESCO component will be funded by an energy lease incorporating the police, public works, and public safety buildings. There is a comprehensive project at the police department headquarters to clean up the property. As I mentioned, that will include sidewalk reconstruction, the pole barn, paving of the lot, savings to the building. At the Sorenti Center, Mr. Bozoni reports that they have incorporated storage space for training and offices. There is consideration being given to vacate the structure on Ash Street, which the city owns, and moving that to the Sorenti and ultimately getting rid of the Ash Street property altogether, so you may save money there. And like I said, he did give me a breakdown, I just haven't had a chance to go through it yet, but I'd be more than happy to give you a copy of this. So, that is the Sorenti Center update. I didn't get a chance to talk with my colleagues in the caucus because we didn't end up having enough time, but I would next week like to carve out some time, some time to talk about what the appointment process will look like for the Ethics Board. I did have a brief conversation on the way out of the caucus with the city solicitor. We may want to try to do this in tandem with the administration because they get two appointments, the controller gets one, and city council gets two. So, we'll hopefully have more news on that next week. Also, I want to thank Mrs. Reed for putting together a document. Also, didn't get a chance to talk about this in the caucus, but as I mentioned a few weeks ago, we are trying to embark on an internship program with the University of Scranton and then open that up to any other local colleges and universities. So, we did, Mrs. Reed is, is working on this, and I really appreciate that. So, we'll have a chance to talk about it hopefully in the caucus next week. And then we'll have to set up a meeting with Ms. Cohen from the university. I already met with her once, and they are very excited to have their students involved in city government. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief items. I know Mr. Gahn mentioned this. I do want to thank Scranton Tomorrow's representatives for coming in and give us, giving us their quarterly update on many of the activities they've been doing in our downtown. I know I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, but I urge everyone who lives in the city to, on a Friday night, take a walk through our downtown, especially if you haven't in a while. There really has been tremendous growth, and it's been driven by, almost exclusively by small locally-owned businesses in our downtown. So, anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to take a stroll through the downtown recently, please do so. Go to the areas you haven't been on in a while. I mentioned Penn Avenue a couple of weeks ago. And my, first, my frustration of not being able to find a parking spot became delight when I realized that's a good problem to have at night in a vibrant city. So, that's definitely something that is a positive, and I urge everyone to, to take that opportunity. I'm very encouraged also with Scranton Tomorrow and many of the partnerships that they are creating and trying to leverage many of the items that not only council has done, but have been done on the state, local, and federal level to encourage downtown development. One of the biggest opportunities is the combination of the LURDA that was passed by city council, and I agree with Councilman Donahue, who I would urge the county commissioners to pass that legislation as well. That abatement combined with part of the Opportunity Zones that are through our downtown really are a golden opportunity for developers to come in and invest in our city. There are vacant tracks to land downtown that are parking lots that could be developed. And many of these incentives, working with different nonprofits, working with the Chamber of Commerce, if they're developed, that's really going to be a, a big hit for our downtown. One last item, I know one of the speakers brought it up. Linda Abley, our OECD Director, is going to be retiring. I want to take an opportunity also to thank her for her service to the city. When I was first elected to council and up until just last year, I was the chairman for OECD. So, I worked with Linda for, for many years, and we had a great working relationship through two administrations, and she really will be missed. She did a great job for the city, so we wish her well in all her future endeavors and her retirement. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire rights of ways necessary for the multi-bridge project. Document number is noted.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. So...
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. This, we voted on legislation regarding this multi-bridge project that's being funded mostly through the state back in 2018, actually on November 27th. And this is simply the state coming in and proceeding with the acquisition of the necessary right of ways. And just to remind everyone, the bridges that are going to be updated and fixed and replaced in some cases are the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge over the railroad, Elm Street Bridge over the Lackawanna River, North Main Avenue Bridge over Leggits Creek, and Parker Street over the Lackawanna River. This will be the acquisition of the right of ways by the state will be paid for 100% by the combination of federal funds available through the Surface Transportation Plan, state funds, and we did carve out some dollars in the 2018 capital budget. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Joseph J. Irish, 138 Lakeview Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as a member of the Housing Appeals Review Board, effective January 22, 2019. Mr. Irish is being appointed to a five-year term, which will expire on January 22, 2024.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Kalina McNichols, 1310 Cornell Streets, Scranton, PA 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority, effective January 18, 2019. Ms. McNichols will be replacing Gopal Patel, who resigned December 21, 2018. Ms. McNichols will fill the unexpired term of Gopal Patel, whose term is scheduled to expire on January 4, 2022.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution accepting the recommendation of the Historical Architecture Review Board and approving the certificate of appropriateness for Pocono Sign Company, 1979 Scranton Carbonell Highway, Blakely, PA 18447, for signage work to be completed on the front edifice of the Everhart Museum situated at 1901 Mulberry Streets, Scranton, PA 18510.
This time, we'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee. So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the council number 52, 2019, and ordinance establishing a no-parking zone along the southerly side of Lackawanna and Jefferson Avenue from segment 0010, offset 0300, Kresler Court intersection, extending north to a driveway at segment 0010, offset 0630.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file the council number 53, 2019, and ordinance approving and accepting the submission of the city of Scranton's Office of Economic and Community Development's five-year revolving loan fund plan as required by the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration.
Heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6B, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file the council number 54, 2019, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to disburse $6,000 from the UDAG repayment account into which urban development action grants repayments are deposited. This will cover the city of Scranton's share of costs for the United Neighborhood Centers of Northeastern Pennsylvania to administer the continuum of care for Lackawanna County during the period July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6C, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption. Resolution number 95, 2019, amending resolution number 86, 2018, entitled, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton and local union number 60 of the International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO, to include only the IME panel of physicians for disability pensions.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption. Resolution number 96, 2019, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Scranton and Lodge Number Two of the Fraternal Order of Police by amending sections of the memorandum of agreement dated March 11, 2016, regarding disability pensions.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Robyn?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.